Well, good morning, everyone. Well, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yes, happy Tuesday, absolutely. Today is Tuesday, April the 12th, 2022, and we're here at 911 Main Street in the heart of Old Town Conyers for our BLC meeting this morning. So, good to see so many folks are out this morning, and we've got a special recognition, I think, here on the calendar. But as I call the meeting to order, I want to stay in the order and make sure that we start off with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance by none other than our very own county coroner Pastor George Levitt Jr. Pastor Levitt, come on up. Give him a round of applause.
Let us pray. God, our Father and Creator, we come now in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ. We thank you for such a great county. We thank you for individuals that work so hard to shine and to glow in your presence. And we pray now that, as we go forth as a county, that you will allow the spirit of unity to continue in this county. We pray you hedge your protection around our leaders, give them wisdom to lead us in the direction that you would have this county to go. And Father, we pray in this meeting today that you would just have your way. Show yourself strong for us as individuals, for us as a county. In Jesus's mighty name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let us stand for the pledge. Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Levitt. Commissioners, it's always a plus to know that our coroner is really not just a coroner. He grew up in a family of morticians, and they've been in the funeral home business since he came into the world. So, that's a plus for us to have someone who is leading our coroner's office, who is a part of a family, who really knows how to take care of people and prepare families for their final resting places. So, we certainly do appreciate that. We don't take it for granted that our coroner is someone who was born and raised in a family of funeral home directors and morticians, and he serves Rockdale County very well. And he's also a local pastor. Let's give Pastor Levitt another round of applause. Just one of the pluses of Rockdale County, and living in a community where you can really be tangible and touchable with so many of your local leaders. Also, seeing our presence this morning, none other than our district attorney, Ms. Alicia Johnson. Stand up so they can see you, Ms. Johnson. Yes, give her a round of applause. And certainly, we're going to be calling her up in the team here in just a second, as I believe we're moving right into our special recognition, Commissioners, with Child Abuse Prevention Month proclamation to be presented to the Prevent Child Abuse Rockdale. Is that right?
That is correct.
All right. Commissioner, which one of you all leading the...
Lieutenant, Commissioner Williams.
Okay, all right, very well. You're going to read the proclamation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Let's give them a round of applause. I mean, first of all, for what they do and the fact that they look so good in that beautiful blue. Yes, yes, yes. Commissioner Williams is going to have the honor of reading the proclamation this morning.
Whereas, as part of the National Observance of Child Abuse Prevention Month, Prevent Child Abuse Rockdale has organized a public awareness campaign to focus on prevention activities and services necessary to eliminate child abuse. And whereas, Prevent Child Abuse Rockdale is a countywide, volunteer-based organization dedicated to the prevention of child abuse and neglect, providing numerous programs and services to the community. And whereas, the tragic reality of child abuse is that it continues to be one of the most urgent family, health, and social problems in our city today, crossing all social, cultural, and economic boundaries. And whereas, there were 1,139 reports of child abuse and neglect, and 26 children were taken into foster care in Rockdale County in 2021. And whereas, Rockdale County government and all of our citizens are committed to child abuse prevention, and we support every effort to protect our children. Now, therefore, we, as members of the Board of Commissioners of Rockdale County, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Rockdale County, and call upon citizens, communities, agencies, religious organizations, educators, medical facilities, and businesses to encourage their participation in strengthening our community through the prevention of child abuse. In witness whereof, we have herein to set our hands and cause the official seal of Rockdale County to be affixed on this 12th day of April 2022, signed by Oz Nesbit Senior Jr., Sherri L. Washington, Commissioner Post 1, and Doreen Williams, Commissioner Post 2.
Madam D, if you'd like to, one of your representatives would love to have a word or two. You're welcome to do that and take it to the podium there. Absolutely. Let's give them another round of applause.
I'm Diane Howington. I'm the Executive Director of Prevent Child Abuse Rockdale, and we just would like to thank the Commissioners for this opportunity and for the month of April of bringing recognition to Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. It's a real problem in this county, and we are working day and night to try to solve this problem, excuse me, with our prevention program. This is Meredith Hutchison. She serves almost 1,000 families every year at Piedmont Rockdale with prevention programs, serving people before the stress sets in, right when the baby is born, with resources and referrals. And she knows just about everything in this county that can help prevent child abuse and neglect. And this is Shonda. She runs the show at our office, and everybody knows the DA, and we're excited to have her on board, too. And the Director of Defense is on her way. She got stuck in traffic, but she also works, her whole agency works so hard to prevent child abuse and neglect in the community, and she serves on our board. So, we do in-home programs. You will see these throughout the community. They represent the healthy, happy childhoods that every child deserves, and that is what we strive for. Our in-home programs work one-on-one with families to give them the resources and the knowledge they need to prevent child abuse. So, please call us, please come to our fundraisers. It's a community effort. It's not just us. We are very thankful for everybody in this community that works hand-in-hand with us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Howington. Thank you so much. Commissioners, Ms. Howington talked about everyone that's on her team, and just like a good leader, she didn't really talk about herself at all, but she's been on the front line, as all of us know, here in Rockdale County, for the youth, particularly for child abuse awareness in Rockdale County for a long, long time. So, Ms. Howington, we also appreciate you and your dedication and commitment to this cause and making sure that there are happy, healthy, and safe young people moving throughout Rockdale County. Let's give them another round of applause. It's a plus, and I think sometimes, you know, we do these special recognitions quite often here at our BLC meetings, but we really have to let it resonate about the meaning of these organizations and nonprofits that are doing so much work. This morning, at the top of the news, I watched the news story about the four-year-old kid that was missing and found in the pond. And of course, as a parent, I had a ton of thoughts of how did the four-year-old... But anyway, having folks who are advocating and who are making sure that our young people in our communities are saved and that we're giving them the tools and resources and providing for their parents and their communities the tools and resources. I know that Ms. Diane Howington and her team and all of the folks with Child Abuse Rockdale have been on the front line on behalf of this community a long, long time, and we can't do it without... It takes, no one gets anything done by themselves. It takes everybody. So, we certainly do appreciate the fine work. We don't get a chance to talk to you all that often, don't see you that often, but we certainly do appreciate what you do, and we appreciate the fine work that you've been doing. And we see your director, she made it through traffic. Give her a round of applause. Now, I don't know where that traffic was. When she said "traffic," Sheriff Levitt, I got into thinking. I said, "I'm not sure. Is she talking about traffic, Commissioner Washington, in Rockdale or somewhere along I-20?"
Let me help you. Oh, I was going to, I was going to help you because there's a whole lot of filming in downtown Conyers today, so it's hard to find parking today, and it's, and it's, there's a lot of traffic in downtown Conyers today.
We just gave you a big shout-out, you and your team, so thank you for your work. Give her another round of applause. So glad that she made it safely here this morning. Moving right along with our agenda this morning, we're now down to item number four.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned, and second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number five.
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned, and second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. There's no unfinished business. At this time, we're going straight to the consent agenda. Item number seven, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move to approve the items on the consent agenda as listed below.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned, and second, are there any comments or concerns about the items on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Do we want to talk about the, have, I think the sheriff and might be here to talk about the pay raises?
I was going to get, I hadn't got to that, Commissioner.
I'm so excited about it.
I know, we're all excited. We're all excited. The people in the Wild, Wild West were really excited when they came up with carriages and buggies, but one thing they remembered was not to put the cart before the horse. So, please stand by. We're coming, absolutely. In fact, I'm going to yield to you in just a second, absolutely. So, we're down to number eight on the regular agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Item 2022-159, if we could just pause for a moment and open up the floor to any public comment relative to this item as I'm, as I'm reading. I don't have anybody signed up, but I just want to make sure we get this on the record, that this is a public hearing relative to a resolution of intent in compliance with the provisions of Official Code of Georgia annotated Title 36, Chapter 9, Section 36-9-3A, 3D, and all related laws for the exchange of real property. This will be for the property exchange that we're doing for the kayak, I think it's an intake, at the monastery at Oglesby Bridge.
Yes.
And I see we have no comments, so we can now go to the vote for the resolution.
I move to approve this resolution as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned, and second, are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 190 is an ordinance to amend the text of Section 106-1, Definitions, Section 218-1, Permitted Use Table, Section 218-13, Standard of Use and Development, Section 222-11, Parking Vehicles in Residential Districts of the Unified Development Ordinance of Rockdale County as amended. This is regarding vehicle parking to repeal conflicting laws and for other purposes. This is ordinance 0-2022-08, and it's submitted for a second reading this morning.
I move to approve the second reading and adopt the ordinance as presented.
I second that motion.
It's been properly motioned, and second, are there any comments, questions, or concerns about this particular ordinance? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 192 is with Embassy Suites Greenfield Downtown River Place through Talent Management. This is for the Teach Retreat Training for Directors and Deputy Directors in the amount of $24,980. The term is May 31st, 2022, through June 3rd, 2022.
I move to approve this contract as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been properly motioned, and second, any comments or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, so at this time, what I'm going to do, I'm going to yield to Commissioner Washington. We are all sharing in the excitement about the decision made by this board and certainly all of our employees. Let me say that again, all of our employees are excited about what's ahead of us, and that includes public safety personnel. Commissioner Washington.
First, I apologize for being, putting the cart before the horse or whatever, but...
It's excitement.
Just excited. But this is, it's huge for our county because we get the opportunity to show our employees how much we value them and their quality of lives and their families, and our law enforcement personnel, our fire and safety. This is us showing that we have Rockdale County employees as our number-one resource and our talent, and we're putting the proverbial money where their mouth is. I had the distinct pleasure of speaking with the sheriff and our fire chief, and I think they both wholeheartedly endorse this, this salary or this budget amendment. And Sheriff, if you'd like to say anything today, I don't, you're sitting in the corner, so I don't know what that means. And Fire Chief, anyone would like to say anything?
I'm going to be silent.
Okay.
I like that. I like that.
Absolutely.
Let's give our fire chief, the sheriff, and the DA a round of applause.
When I came here five years ago, I believe our firefighters were at $27,000, $29,000, and I was like, that was laughable. I'm like, somebody's playing with me, correct? And been in this profession for 24 years, as cliché as it may sound, we don't do it for the money. We do it because of our support and care for our families and the citizens, communities we serve. So, now, you all have, since I've been here, have always supported us, but now it's even more visible to everyone that you support us, which is why I wanted to make sure that not only you see me here this morning, but members of Rockdale County Fire Rescue as well. Sheriff Levitt always reference us when he speaks, and I, you know, in support of all public safety, I truly say thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, the opportunity to speak. I had the opportunity to speak to Director Holmes yesterday. I happened to call, and I heard word about this increase, and in full candor, I was brought to tears. And let me tell you why. I was kind of echoing what we just heard. The people who work in my office do so because it's their calling, not because of the money they make or the thank-yous they get. It's hard work, it's important work, and they know that what they do matters every single day. And while we do our best to provide donuts on Thursdays and hot chocolate bars every so often, nothing, nothing quite meets the county being able to say thank you as a whole. And when you increase their, their pay raises and when you acknowledge them and the work they do diligently every single day, whether it's through a pandemic or not, you say thank you. The community says thank you. And so, I had, I had to stand here today to be able to voice that as well because it matters, and so I thank you all very much, and the work that we do is important.
Thank you so much. Well, good morning, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good mornings. First, let me thank Director Tony Holmes, Director Mark Lewis in his new role, wherever he is, oh, he's right here, for not only working with myself, but of course, the fire chief and other members of the county. Although from day one, when I first got elected, I made it a promise to the staff that I was going to always fight for their salaries. And the one thing that I always tell them, that I don't forget where I came from. And to the day I walk out of that office, I would never forget where I came from. And I just want to let you all know that this is not going to stop me from fighting for their salaries. But what it will do is allow me to continue to sit down and work with you all so that we can make sure that we stay ahead of the game, not only for public safety, but for all of our county employees. They're what I call the boots on the ground, and we appreciate them, and we have just as good of talents within our organizations as any other county, so they all deserve this increase. But I have to say, for the Rockdale County Sheriff's Office, who are under my leadership, I truly appreciate all of the sacrifices that they have done for not only me, but for the agency and for this county, and they continue to do that sacrifice. And as I say, folks said, this is a calling for us. And naturally, we don't get in it for the money when we first get in it, but it does feel good to be appreciated of getting paid what we feel like we deserve. And I say that because I am a Rockdale County resident, I am a father, and I have a wife. And I think my wife and my children and the rest of my family share with me as a Rockdale County resident that if any taxes ever go up, I would prefer them to go up for the men and women that put on that badge and strap on that gun each and every day that sacrificed their life for you and I. And so, again, my hat's off to all three of you because I know that we all have had our ups and downs when it comes to discussing the pay for public safety. And when I say public safety, I'm not just talking about the sheriff's office, I'm talking about fire and 911, because we all are one, we're in this together. We can't do it without them, and they can't do it without us. And so, I appreciate you all listening to me, listening to other directors and the fire chief and the DA and who all else, other elected officials that have bit your ears about increased salaries for their employees. So, we appreciate all that you all have done to sacrifice what you've done for, within this budget and this county for the men and women of this entire county. And I'll let you end it, Chairman, by saying your famous quotes of the type of people that live in Rockdale County.
Well, I appreciate that.
That's not what I thought.
I appreciate you knowing, I appreciate you knowing the quote, and I like to hear when you all start saying it, but for the sake of this request, there's only two kind of people. Those that live in Rockdale and those that wish they lived in Rockdale County. Let's give them a round of applause. Commissioners, there's so much to be said about every single one of our employees in Rockdale County. And certainly, we appreciate all of our public safety personnel. I know that I speak for this entire board when I tell you that this board has always been a supporter of making sure that we are competitive in this region and in this market. Yes, as the sheriff said it, he put it very eloquently, we've had some challenges to get to where we are, but guess what? We're here now, and we continue to look forward to the future as things change, as the economy change, as we have to remain competitive as we move forward so that we can attract and retain the right type of quality, competent talent. I'm going to yield, Commissioners, just for a second, because I tell you, the Department of Talent Management, and I know the sheriff may mention too, but I want to call up Executive Director Tony Holmes. Give her a round of applause as she's coming up.
Thank you, thank you. Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
I actually want to give my team a round of applause. If they are watching, they actually did a lot of the work on their side. Talent Management. Mr. Chairman, I'm just, and I did this last week, but I want to read the very first sentence to our compensation philosophy. I want to share it with everybody. "Rockdale County acknowledges that employees are the county's most valuable resource." Very first sentence in our compensation philosophy. I definitely wanted to share that. The other thing is, I am super excited. So, some of the changes, I'm just going to talk about highlights, right? Our new minimum pay rate right now is $15 an hour for Rockdale County. The other thing I mentioned last week, Commissioner Williams and I wanted to talk about this, I talked about employees being impacted, and I said 880-plus. That is based on the amount of FTEs we had at the time when we ran the report. This market study actually touches every position, but what that says to me is, we have some vacancies. So, if it's 880 employees, that's what this number is reflecting, the active employees, but we do have vacancies. I'm excited about these new raises because we'll be able to recruit, retract and, sorry, attract and retain really good talent. The other thing I want to talk about, our compression increase. Compression increases 8%. The methodology for this market study is really simple. We brought everybody to the new minimum of the pay grade or 8%, whichever is greater. The lowest increase for this market study was 8% for the market study. And the very last thing I'm going to say, Mr. Chairman, is that thank you guys for this vote. This actually, it should show up on everybody's paycheck, not should, will show up on everybody's paycheck on April 22nd, so our very next pay period, Mr. Chairman, Madam Commissioner, thank you.
Thank you. Let's give them another round of applause. Executive Director Holmes, we certainly do appreciate you and all of the staff inside of the Talent Management Department. I'm going to yield to my colleague, Commissioner Williams.
So, I think this is a really exciting day. I don't think any of us had any second thoughts about approving this, and because we know how valuable our, our employees are. We, we couldn't do, our county would not really be successful without our employees who do the work. And, and that includes our public safety, law enforcement, fire and rescue, 911, as well as every single employee in this county who has their niche and their expertise and provides part of the teamwork that goes on. Appreciate the support of Director Lewis, who, you know, went carefully with us over the impact of this and what it means. And the sheriff alluded to the fact that perhaps there will need to be some millage rate increases to maintain this, since this particular raise comes from federal funding that we received. But I don't think there's a single one of us that is not, not willing to do that because it needs to be done. And, and I, we have the support of our financial director and, and our, and our teams, and we appreciate all of you, directors, citizens, our, our law enforcement, fire and rescue. We appreciate everything that you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Certainly, the Talent Management Department is the People Department, human resources. But all of us understand that the world doesn't move without money. I'm going to call up our CFO, Mark Lewis. Give him a round of applause.
I'd like to thank the board for this as well. The funds, as you mentioned, Commissioner Williams, does come from our funding. We do realize the impact going forward of this, but indeed, there has been a longstanding neglect, shall we say, in terms of addressing the needs of the employees here. So, I, my hats off to this board for addressing it. I'm thankful that we were able to do it during this session when it was much needed. And as we go forward, we do realize it will have an impact on the military, but thank you for this.
Thank you, and thank you and your team as well, Director Lewis. Give them a round of applause. So, we're making a big deal out of this because it's a big deal. This is a major milestone for Rockdale County as a whole, and the Commissioner was talking about, as she referenced, some of the comments from Sheriff Levitt about the fact of the decisions that we, as a board, will have to make regarding the millage rate. You know, Commissioner, let me just tell you, we're not alone because now we have all of the support, the fire chief, the DA, the sheriff. We have men and women all across this county that are employed, not just public safety, but all of our employees that are able to go out into the trenches and the hedges of Rockdale County and say, "Look, they've got to do this." Because we were hemorrhaging, we were losing people to other agencies, other organizations, and this plugs it up to some degree, major. It stops the hemorrhaging, and now you have a ton of employees who serve as those mouthpieces to go out and say to other citizens, "This is the reason why we're doing..." I can't think of a citizen who doesn't want good public safety and protection. I can't think of a citizen who doesn't want good public safety and protection in their community. I can't think of a citizen who don't want to take their small child to a nice park with great park equipment and activities and who wouldn't enjoy what they've seen happen now over at Johnson Park. I can't think of a citizen who don't want to drive on a road that's not filled with potholes and those kind of things and knowing that our Department of Transportation is doing the job and we have the personnel to get the job. So all of our departments, our DA's office, having enough personnel to be able to deal with the caseloads and all of the things that are taking place in and around our community to be able to address. At the end of the day, they're called to do this work, but at the same time, they got to go to Walmart, Public, Kroger, they got to pay tuition, they got to go to the barber shop, they got to live, they got to take care of their families. And that's what it's all about. So I'm really excited about the direction that we're going in. I'm going to yield to Sheriff Levitt. Come on up Sheriff, come on up.
One last thing if you want to add. Out of 63 or 69 counties that we did a pay study, our board and commission, we were like number, if you say, if it was 69 counties, we were like number 67 as the lowest paid agency of the 69 counties that we did. And because of our board and our talent management and our finance department, this new increase has now brought us to round number 22 of that list. Last thing, Mr. Chairman, that after this meeting, we, I think we've reached out to the fire department, we're going to do a blast, we're going to reach out to you, Mr. Joe. We're going to have a job fair at the parking lot inviting the fire department and I think 911 at that job fair to try to attract for these vacancies that Dr. Director Tony Holmes and Nancy told you. Thank you for that.
Well, that's good news Sheriff, the collaboration of our public safety team, the sheriff's office, our fire chief and 911 working together in collaboration to do a joint unified job fair, that's a good look for the community and for this county as a whole. This is what it's all about. Working together and collaborating on behalf, not just employees, because you knew though the benefactor are the residents of Rockdale County. So it makes a big, big difference. Commissioner Williams, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Well, I was just going to say, you've been in office about six years longer than I have. Have you ever seen a raise of 8%?
Never, ever.
Right.
We are, in fact, it's funny you reference that because on January 4th of 2017, when I became chairman, it had been a raise submitted that following year, that December of, I think it was 4.5%. And on the 4th day of January, the first day I took office, we increased it to a 5% to everybody. I thought that 4.5 was a joke way back then. We've since then some more improvements in 2018, but never on record in Rockdale County has there ever been a raise to this degree. I also want to make sure we point out again what Director Holmes pointed out. Not only did we take care of the raise, we also addressed in this procedure the compression of those who are already here, who've been here, who've served. Because oftentimes in the workplace, people who've been around get a little irritated when the guy or girl come in the door and they're making way more than they've been making and they've been around here 10 or 15 years. So to be able to not just address the attraction part of it, but the retention part of it, those individuals who have been here, who stuck with us through the thick and thin, we really appreciate. So this is historical for Rockdale County. I'm just blessed and honored, this is a privilege to be a part of a board who understands the need of the community. And in addressing the needs of the community, we must address the needs of our personnel because these are the folks who are serving the deliverables. We have to have that happen. So it's a big deal and yes ma'am, this is the first time this has ever happened.
Well, I knew it had been the first time since I'd been in office, but.
I've not seen it ever. This is the first time it has ever happened at all. So we're so gracious. And Commissioner Washington, before we proceed forward, you're back in time just to add any additional comments that you like regarding this pay increase for all of our personnel, including our law enforcement and public safety.
Well, I just think that it's time and I commend the fortitude of you all because we had to make some very difficult decisions on what our priorities are. And I think a lot of people need to understand that, that we did have to reprioritize a lot of things. But to us, like I said before, our personnel is our number one resource and you can't really take care of county business without taking care of the people who come to work and work very hard for us every day. So I think that this is historic, but I think that it is what we need to do in order to move forward and position this, keep this county in the position that it's in. So I'm excited. I'm excited for you all and I want everybody to take some child to go get some ice cream from me.
All right. Well, Commissioner Washington and Commissioner Williams, thank you again for moving forward with these decisions on behalf of all of our employees and on behalf of all of our citizens here in Rockdale County. At this time, Executive Director Relish, I think we're down to public comment.
Yes, and I believe we have one that's filled out, so I'll read right now in case anybody else has one.
Okay.
As a reminder, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Comments relative to any issues that are currently going through the public hearing process, matters that are in active litigation, political campaigning or partisan politics will not be heard in this meeting. Speakers are to address the chairman, not each other or the audience, and are expected to conduct themselves in an inappropriate manner. The use of abusive or profane language shall not be allowed. No debate or argument between speakers and/or members of the audience shall be permitted.
All right, thank you. First up is Ms. Corliss Turner. Come on up, Ms. Turner.
Good morning, Rockdale County.
Good morning.
I just have a statement I would like to read. I am a mother, grandmother, taxpayer, and most of all, a woman. There's obviously no respect for any of that. There have been several occasions at the BOC meetings, particularly March 22nd, 2022, I was personally attacked, disrespected, talked down to, humiliated and insulted. I was more ashamed of the behavior than the effects it had on me. The behavior was a negative first impression on a first-time taxpayer I had invited to the meeting. It has been said, believe half of what you hear and all of what you see, and when a person show you who they are, believe it. The ACCG County Commissioners Handbook, 2019, 5th Edition, page 548 states, "A public officer's trust created in the interest and for the benefits of the people. In order to be an effective presiding officer, the chair must use good manners, preserve each participant's right to speak without interruption, and maintain dignity and composure." It has been said on many occasions that Rockdale County is the greatest county in Georgia. Greatness begins with great leadership. The board, this board has exhibited the heart of their leadership by the treatment of Rockdale County taxpayers, in particular, myself. It has been stated that if you want qualified employees and qualified service, we have to have, we have to pay for it. What do we have to do to have qualified leadership? It's evident I marked the wrong box at this election, at the last election. And I also want to thank Von Jameson and the Rockdale County Water Department. I have received my water bill two months in a row on time. Thank you and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Turner, and thank you for all that you do on behalf of the citizens of Rockdale County. Do we have any more public comments?
That's all I had.
All right, very good. We're now down to board comment, and I'll start with Commissioner Washington.
So first, I would like to actually address the comment that was just made by Ms. Turner. Ms. Turner, I will personally say that if you ever felt disrespected by voicing your opinion, I do apologize for that feeling. We don't ever want anybody to feel as if they can't come to us to voice their opinions. We're not going to always agree with them, but by, gosh, this is, if nothing else, this is a country where you can voice your opinion. Like I said, we might not agree on it, but I want, at least we should make you feel comfortable in hearing that opinion. So I apologize if there was anything that I did to make you feel uncomfortable. That being said, it is Easter weekend and there's a lot of things going on for the children. I hope that everybody gets out. If you have little children or grandchildren, then I want everybody to get out and do something fun. You know, the weather just broke. There are several Easter egg hunts around the metro Atlanta area. That might be something that Mr. Redmond and I might put together for next year so we can have one in Rockdale County. But I really want people to get back outside, back enjoying, living here in this great county. Our parks and recreation, they're wide open. We have Blackshear Park that we can go fishing. Was it Black?
Blackshells.
Blackshells, I keep saying it wrong. Blackshells Park, we can go fishing, you have Costly Mill, the beautiful trail there. Get out and take your loved ones out and enjoy the springtime weather unless you like me that I still have to wear my mask because the pollen is about to take me out. Just do something and enjoy this beautiful spring weather. That's really all I have until Dr. Williams gives me something else to talk about today.
Commissioner Williams?
I had the opportunity last week to attend an ACO conference, Healthy Counties, in Raleigh, North Carolina. And I learned some things and I got some ideas of things that we could do here in Rockdale County. There was a lot of talk about affordable housing. And Loudoun County in Virginia has an unmet housing needs strategic plan. And I am going to say that we need to do that. We, you know, we've got some hit and miss of ideas, but nothing specific for unmet housing needs. And, you know, strategic plans are always, you know, a big thing for me because they give us a focus and a guideline. And they help us find out what the community is interested in and, you know, how they feel about it. So that strategic plan for unmet housing needs is something that I want to pursue, excuse me. And part of that housing thing is because if you don't have stable housing, it affects every piece of the community, every piece of your life. And as I was thinking about our prevent child abuse Rockdale, my guess is that while child abuse crosses all social and economic, what's the word?
Boundaries.
Boundaries, yes. I would think because of the stress of not having housing that that would increase the child abuse. Because anytime adults are stressed and children act like children, you know, it just exacerbates. And so I feel like it's time we looked at a real significant housing, unmet need housing strategy. Another thing I learned that I did not know is that, and perhaps the fire chief and the sheriff know, I don't know, but there are fentanyl test strips that are available. Are you familiar with that?
Educate us please.
Okay, fentanyl test strips allows, allow you to find out if there's fentanyl in the drugs that are being distributed. And I had never heard of it before and neither had many of the other people.
The drugs that are being distributed from the pharmacy, from whom?
No, not from the pharmacy, illegal drugs. You know, a big part of our opioid epidemic is because of the fentanyl that's been laced into those drugs.
I know the sheriff knows that and the DA knows about it. I knew that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And so that fentanyl, I, you know, personally have a friend whose grandson passed away from using the drugs that was laced with fentanyl. I'm sure he had no idea, but if, I think we need to do a little research into those strips that would identify that and put those in the hands of people who maybe are using, maybe through our courts, maybe, I don't know what the best way is to do it, but we need to be about saving lives. And that could be one way of doing it. Another one that I loved, I think this was in San Diego, the day after Thanksgiving, we often talk about Black Friday. Well, San Diego County talks about Green Friday. And they encourage families and individuals to get out to parks and recreation and get outside because that really improves mental health and it strengthens families when you go places like that. And so we need to be thinking about Green Friday. And then there were just lots of other ideas and I've got several pages of stuff and a whole list of things to talk to Lisa Chester about and do some more research. But anytime we have the opportunity to become more educated, I think it's so valuable. And we, you know, we approved that contract this morning for, from that group out of Greenville to provide leadership training for our directors and deputy directors. That is never a waste of funding because your minds have to always be engaged in thinking and learning new things. That's, those are my comments.
All right, Commissioner Washington, part two.
The only thing I have as part two is I just got a text from our tax commissioner who said that she wants to be in on the Easter egg hunt. So now you have two commissioners to contend with Director Redmond.
All right, very good. Well, Director Redmond, I think you just added to your things to do list for 2023, absolutely, like there's going to be an Easter egg hunt, absolutely. I see the young man in the rear, yes sir.
I'm wondering about the Easter extravaganza at San Diego.
We're talking about if we can get a flyer.
Deputy, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing all right.
Let's give this young deputy a round of applause, absolutely. Now, what's your name Deputy?
Sergeant Tate.
Sergeant Tate, yes sir. Sergeant, tell us about this big Easter extravaganza at the sheriff's office.
All right, so we do have this every year. It is a great event. We bring about, I think it was last year, like 300 to 400 kids. We bring them out and we have an Easter egg hunt. You'll see the sheriff out there throwing down some Easter eggs. We do, we have partnered with the Academy Sports that's actually New Tecumseh and they will be giving out gift cards as well. So those will be a part of that. And it's, yeah, that actually is a flyer. So we would love to see you guys there, we would love to, you know, have you guys support. So it'll be again Saturday, the 16th, from 2 to 5.
And you're going to be over?
And where will it be?
At the sheriff's office.
At the sheriff's office, 911 Chambers Drive.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, they can find that flyer on the sheriff's department Facebook page and social media as well as the county's social media as well.
Outstanding. I know that the commissioner just got a text from the tax commissioner who I should have just heard that announcement from Sergeant Tate. So Commissioner, are you texting her back?
Yeah, I'm sure I don't have to.
She'll be there. Let's give the sergeant another round of applause. Thank you so much. So many good things are happening in Rockdale County and so many different departments and divisions all across the county are bringing wonderful things for our community. I'm glad that he responded with that information and we were able to get it up on the monitor and talk about what they're doing over at the sheriff's office in terms of bringing our young people out and particularly engaging with public safety and letting them see that other side of. and letting them see that other side of law enforcement. A lot of times folks don't understand, they're human too. Law enforcement people have children. They understand. This is a beautiful event. So thank you, Sheriff Levitt, and thank you, Sergeant, for coming up and sharing that information with us. I do just want to, as we bring our meeting very rapidly to a close, I want to just say thank you to Chief Marion McDaniel and all the members of the Rockdale County Fire and Rescue. I also want to thank Ms. Arja Green and Ms. Cara Motley. They co-chaired the 13th Annual Linda Hamm Event that we were able to provide the hams to our local senior citizens here in Rockdale County this past Sunday was, last Sunday was Palm Sunday. This coming Sunday is Easter Sunday. This is the 13th year we've been able to level on our seniors and make sure that we support some of them who are certainly on a fixed income. And it really, really made a big difference. But the number of volunteers, the fire department, and I have to make sure I mention our platinum sponsor, Courtesy Forward. Courtesy Forward has been with us. They're located, you know, on 1636 Dogwood Drive. They've been with us for all of these years as our official drop-off location for the hams. And they make sure that they pull up the rear each year if we're shod or shy and not having enough. For thirteen years, we've been doing this, and we certainly do appreciate all of the volunteers who came out to be a part of that. And that certainly includes Chief McDaniel and her team. Because what happens when folks drop the hams off at the car dealership, the freezer fills up. So they send the fire department over to take that load and now we have a new empty freezer and start it off again. And yes, they, absolutely. Now, let's give them another round of applause. Absolutely. I don't know whether they get excited or be glad to see the hams go, but each year at Easter time, we're able to bless so many of our seniors. And this is, as Commissioner Washington may have mentioned, the weather has broken. This is an excellent time of the year. Yes, we're fighting a little bit with the pollen. I do agree. But this is a beautiful time of the year to get out. I want to really promote our parks and recreation. And I will call up Director Redmond to come on up at this time because he's got some, this is the best time of the year to be in our parks in Rockdale County. We've got a lot to brag about in terms of the parks here in Rockdale. Director Redmond?
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, Madam Commissioners. Yes, as you said, we are back in full swing post-pandemic, being able to program again and get outside. So not only do you have one Easter egg hunt, you have two Easter egg hunts. So ours will be held on Saturdays. Yes, you have options. Ours will be held Saturday, April 16th, at Johnson Park. Ours start at 10:00 AM, I'm sorry, in the art room for arts and crafts. And then we have the Easter egg hunt start at 11:30. So the kids will get an opportunity to come to our Easter egg hunt and then go to the sheriff's Easter egg hunt at two to five, so they get a double whammy.
You get a double whammy.
Now, that is a lot. Then we also have our Community Safety and Awareness Day. This is taking place on Saturday, April 30th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This will be held at 1400 Parker Road, Conyers, Georgia. It's a day just for us to get out and educate the community with awareness. We have partnered with the sheriff's department, fire rescue. We have senior services, mental health providers, K-9 Redemption Road, Rockdale County Animal Services, live demonstrations, pet adoptions. Everything will be there at Parker Road. So as you said, Chairman, we're out and about, getting everything back in order, getting back on track.
Very good. We certainly appreciate all of what's happening during this season and Parks and Recreation and just, this is double, like you said, double whammy. They have options now. They can come to the Johnson Park and participate there, then go over to Chambers Drive and participate. There'll be jelly beans all across St. Louis.
Jelly beans are my favorite thing in the world.
One last thing. We love to focus on the community and take care of the community. We also focus on the employees. So Parks and Recreation has also partnered with Talent Management to restart county games, that is, internal games played with the employees. I know a couple of people complained about getting some COVID pounds on. So we're gonna give them the opportunity to work these off. So the only bad news for that is we start this tomorrow with our three-on-three basketball tournament. So all the directors are playing for second place at this point because I'm playing. So, you know, and I owe fire one from the last time. But that's all we have. That's all we have, Chairman.
I noticed how you slid that in there.
She likes to get the young recruits involved, but...
Well, you know what? The fire chief is right to get the younger recruits involved. Do you remember our kickball game?
Yes.
Everybody was out of my range. I was like, I'm out.
She still remembers.
Yeah, a good number of Rockdale County directors bit dust during the kickball game. Absolutely. Thank you so much. Let's give Parks and Rec a round of applause. Thank you all. This has been a very high-spirited meeting. We certainly do appreciate all of you all coming out and supporting what we're trying to do to make Rockdale County and to keep Rockdale County as the best county in the state of Georgia. We certainly appreciate you being patient as we move toward future progress. And I think today, the message that has been sent is clear that the Board of Commissioners have all of our employees on their minds and in their hearts in terms of them and their families and the community with the deliverables that are needed to make Rockdale the best county that it is. At this time, Executive Director Relich, is there any need for executive session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, for the purpose of discussing land acquisition.
All right. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move that we adjourn to executive session.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for coming out.
My second motion.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us this morning. We're now moving into executive session. Enjoy your day. Happy Tuesday.